Please stand.
Lord Father, we thank you for all your blessings, especially, Lord Father, for your death, your resurrection, there from the cross of Calvary, where you gave redemption for all that who would accept you as Christ. We pray, dear God, for all those, Lord Father, that haven't, that they would before it's too late. And God would just pray that you do remember all the sick, especially those have cancer, taking chemo and radiation, little kids in the hospital. God, we pray for those in nursing home, and we pray, dear God, you bless them. We thank you for all your blessings. I pray you bless the city and our leaders, dear God, that they make the right decisions for the citizens of Laphala and for employees. And, dear God, we just thank you, Lord Father, that you love us so good. The Bible says, "We love you because you first loved us." And I pray we'll be able, Spirit God, in all things we do, and we'll give you the honor, praise, and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise your allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Joe, you call, roll please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Here.
Mr. Fainan.
Here.
Ms. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
Mayor.
I'm number four. Prove that you mean from your February 2014, you have a copy of your packet, spoon, castle. Motion, Mr. Jeller, you have a second?
Yes.
Second, my standing, call roll.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainan.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number five. Report from your boards, commision, department. It's what's your pleasure?
Motion, say.
Motion, my bottom, you have a second?
Yes.
Second, my standing, call roll.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainan.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
Motion carries. I'm number six. Any comments from your sisters?
I'd like to see a real good job, and I appreciate our local, you know, city official. I think the recreation department, I personally like way to doing a real good job. They need to look at new city initiatives.
Thank you. Any announcements?
Mayor, if you want to add something to the agenda, you can put down your...
Okay.
Put down the cover, please.
Okay. Any opinions? All right. Administration, I'm number one. Charges on the city credit card.
Mayor, this is something that we've been looking at for the last two years, because there's an incident. So I'm going to make three different motions on this. And my first motion is going to be that before we use city credit cards or use any per diem money, the council must approve that. And that's my motion. I'm going to put that in the motion.
I second that motion. Call roll, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainan.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Mayor, when we seem like I have to do this every time, you're supposed to get, you're supposed to ask for a comment to the council when they put a motion before you call roll for a motion.
Okay.
And that way, we don't have to put in, and that's the motion.
Professionally, okay.
You don't care.
You not voted, you just have to comment?
I'm not.
Would you have to comment on?
Oh, not on this particular case?
Yeah. Motion carries.
Yes.
My second motion on this is, since we have a, what we have, go nice one March, what, next week?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve any use of the credit card group, any city councilman and per diem money, for those who don't.
Okay. Any comments? Call roll, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainan.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Is that legal, Rick? Do you do that?
To do a...
A legal specification like that?
Yeah. I'll, I'll...
Well, I mean, as far as the per diem on that specific trip, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And the third item is, we looked at, all of us had copies of the last two years, and we only went back to the last two years. And we looked at all the trips, and I had all the per diems that Terry provided with me. And there were two trips that was, that was somewhat wrecked. And I've talked to Hansford about this, and it was the Memphis trip and the Gatlinburg trip. So, in my opinion, there was no reason that anybody needed to be in those cities at that particular time without approval of the council. So my motion is that I looked at this, and it came out to be if you used all the credit cards and all the per diems and all that stuff, $431.89 each. So my motion is going to be to bill Kate Sexton $431.89 and to bill Hansford Hatmaker $431.89. With Hansford's, since we are, since he's collecting payroll or something, that I suggested we garnish his check until that money gets over a period of three months or something, until that's paid off. That's my motion.
Now, is that for both trips that you're talking about?
Both trips. That's all it was, is $431.89.
Okay. Then it'd be for Hansford and Kate, right?
Yes, you have to be on Hansford, I mean Kate, and we garnish Hansford.
Okay.
You want to comment?
Okay, you want to comment?
Yeah, I want to comment. Okay. You're talking about, I'm not, I've never been responsible for a credit card. And not only that, Mayor, now, these checks that have been wrote over the credit card, and every check that's run is approved by you, you got to sign before it can be paid. So you sign this, Kate made, I guess Kate turned it in. I've never seen it.
You sure you had a copy of your package here a couple months ago?
Well, I...
Copy of the paper?
That, this is two year ago. Now, you guys can sit here and worry about the nickels and the dollars flying by you. Now, if you want, you talk about the Memphis trip, he said $431.
Both trips.
Both, both trips, okay. Now, let me show you what you done, Mayor. And I assumed, to start with, Jimmy told me that the DA okayed the trip for him to Memphis. Then, after I talked to the DA and found out she didn't okay, the change did mine, said you did. So I assumed that you called that shot. You guys could sit here and, 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 it always won't be this way, Joe. It always won't be this way. So I've seen it come and go, and I've seen Bob come and go, too. And, and, which you're trying to hold, be responsible for something that hasn't anything to do with, as far as the check is concerned, and that's what he's talking about.
Credit card.
Credit card. Credit card. I didn't, I'm not responsible, never been responsible for a credit card. But you sent Jimmy, and he took one of his guys with him to Memphis, and you spent over a thousand dollars trying to come up with something on me. You know, here you are the mayor, and here Jimmy is the chief police.
Credit.
And you guys think that, you know, let alone like, well, you're still under investigation at. Listen, if I'm in under investigation with the TBI about this, doesn't bring the charges. Let's quit talking about it, bring them in here, and let Jimmy show what it is, instead of getting out and telling everybody, oh, he's still under investigation.
I believe in the license we had, Mr. Hatmaker, Mr. Jeffrey's saying that he would give each council member a copy of what he discovered in Memphis, is that correct, Jimmy?
It was over a thousand dollars, you count his expense.
We're not talking about the money.
I'm talking about... No, you, you, Bob's talking about the money, for me. You get along with these other conversations.
Well, you're going to talk about the Memphis trip, you're setting it up for me.
Yeah. And so if you done spent over a thousand dollars there, trying to find something on me, that Kate, okay, then you okay.
Mr. Hatmaker, I didn't know Kate, you and Kate going to Memphis or Gatlinburg either.
You okayed that check, or it wasn't being paid.
The credit card check, I sign all the checks, Mr. Hatmaker. If I don't sign them, you have assigned, you signed them, you advised, before Mr. Bollinger.
That don't make you responsible, cause you signed.
Did you and Mr. Sexton take a trip to Memphis and Gatlinburg?
I told you, said we did. Bob said we did.
The credit card says you did.
I'm not...
The director's told me, if he was...
Ask Jimmy Jeffers, he's what done the investigation.
Did you find anything Mr. Hatmaker or Mr. Sexton done that wasn't dealing with the city of Laphala, when you went to Memphis?
Investigation?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And did it see Laphala, right?
Not that I could find. I will provide you, everybody, with a written report. Due to the Bartley trial that was going on last week, I hadn't got a chance to speak with General Jones to make sure that that was, she had told me prior, at the onset of the investigation, to provide you with a report at some point. I hadn't spoke with her due to the Bartley investigation, hadn't been able to get in touch with her yet to make sure that I can go ahead and provide you with that. I don't see why she wouldn't let me provide you with that at this point. But also, to clear things up, I didn't tell Mr. Hatmaker that the DA sent me to Memphis. I told Mr. Hatmaker the DA assigned me an investigation that I, that I was duty bound to do, and I also let Mr. Hatmaker know that I had spoken with everybody else on the council prior to leaving for Memphis. And everybody else on the council was aware of the fact that I had left and went to Memphis. I wasn't at liberty to speak to Mr. Hatmaker about leaving for Memphis, because he was the subject of the investigation.
Mr. Mayor, all I'm trying to do is put an end to all this. And I'm not even bringing up that, that, I'm trying to put an end to this, and I think this is the easiest way to do it. I'm trying to protect it, the money that goes out for this ground. And if one of our, if we need a per diem, monies, and it's before an election, I mean, before a meeting or something like that, they can pay it out of pocket, and then we can vote for it after the fact, and we can vote for it. That way, it protects Terry, protects Wanda, protects everybody from getting per diems, and also protects us on the credit card, you know. But we, we never brought up the $30,000, $31,000 with the cars that was damaged and was paid for by our insurance. We ever did do that. We never did bring up a lot of things. This is a very easy way out, Mr. Mayor. This is the easiest way I saw to get out of this. And it's just, it's less than $500 a piece.
Let me tell you something, Danny. It'll be a cold day, and you know the word, when you get anything out of me. And, and, and I'll fight you to the very end, and, and I don't care if you're knowing it or anybody else knowing it. And I'm not responsible for this, and, which I don't know how to read, and not even going to ask. But as far as being responsible for a credit card or a check wrote, you can make all the motions you want to, and, and I don't care, and, but you can go ahead and do things, and the rest of the people can go along with you if they want to. I don't care about that either.
What I'm doing on this motion is it...
The only thing that I would have an issue with as far as deducting it from a check is that takes a quarter. It's over.
Well, they'll spend another thousand dollars, $2,000, with you trying to get $400. But that, that make a difference, just me.
Well, I'm going to change my...
And don't work that road at all.
I'll change my motion just to send a bill to both Mr. Sexton and Mr. Hatmaker, $431.
Okay. Who's second, who's second, here?
I have a question, a clarification. Even though we don't possess a credit card for the city, but we're recipients of goods, services, or something from that credit card, we're still liable, we're still responsible for that charge, even though that we're not given a credit card ourselves, if I benefited from a charge?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
If you voted.
If I benefited, if I benefited from...
Yeah, if you voted on it, then we're all responsible.
Always have been.
Okay, Bob, you rescind that to make a motion to...
Just to bill Mr. Sexton and Mr. Hatmaker.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second, my call, Roger.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainan.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Motion carries. Under Police Department, the chief has pulled both his promotions, so it's off the agenda. I'm, I'm number one, Department Works, concerned requires on North and Leonard Street. Bring me to meeting, take the session after the meeting.
I would think that would be better than the met, than the executive session.
Okay.
Give me some advice there.
Okay, let's go ahead and pull this.
The junior.
My recommendation.
Okay, let's go ahead and pull this off to Jim Oles meeting, executive session, following the meetings now. Under Foreign Department, open page.
Go ahead, and I have something to do with the street department.
Oh, absolutely, wait.
Come my attention. We, I, my understanding is, we have given the department heads the rights and the, to set their own hours, handle their own during absent of the city administrator. And I want to make sure that, I want to make a motion that, in that effect, that where our council, that our department heads can set their own hours for their men, because it's coming up summertime, Johnny has to have them in early, Jim Oles has to have them in a little bit earlier. So I like to go ahead and make a motion, make sure none of us interfere with their...
But still, our for dinner, right, and all the departments?
Let's leave that, this is in this, we actually leave the administration off, all up for dinners. What about, what about Johnny for an hour, Jim?
That's fine.
What about you, Jim?
Hello there. Are you doing well, Matt?
Gary, I mean, okay.
I have a motion, my bottom, you have a second?
Yes.
Have a second, call roll.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainan.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Under Foreign Department, opening page for extraction tools. Gary, you have sent the council a copy of your packet?
Yes, we have, we have four bids. Win Fire Equipment was low bid, and they had an upgrade in there, about some customers, $2,000. I want to add that to it. They're still low bid, and I recommend that we give to Win Fire Equipment for $22,137.
Gary, was it that quick couplets?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask you something, Gary?
Yes.
The equipment we trained on, what was it?
It's, we trained on two different ones. They're basically all the same thing.
Which one Genesis?
Was high tech, it's $23,000. We also trained on the person, emergency vehicle specialist, it's $22,639.
Which one has the most force?
I'm talking to the firemen.
You know, which one has the most force?
They, uh...
Did Genesis have?
I don't remember, I don't remember what the bids, what, I mean, what bid. You can see the cost is about the same. Some manufacturers makes the stuff, it's got more force, some makes less force.
Explain what the force means.
That's the prime part, that's what lifts the...
Actually, it's the most important. If we don't have enough force, we can't private enough cost.
Right.
Or a truck or semi.
It's Win Fire Equipment, they've been in business for, they've sold this TNT for, I think they said 29 years, and they're basically the same thing. Some of the firemen want stuff different, and you get into that, when you, you can't let everybody choose what they want. So this is my recommendation. I went over it probably more than any other bid, so that's my recommendation.
That's from Win Fire Equipment, right, Gary?
Can I, you want to say, you all, and the firemen want to say anything?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here to speak. Actually, the gear, all this equipment, we, like Gary said, we hit four different big bid. Some of this equipment, you comparing apples to apples. You take, one company, their cutters may have a thousand pound of torque going in, cutting, where the other one might be a thousand dollar less, a thousand pound less. You can add your splitter, your, your different tools, the other one will have a thousand more, and a thousand less, back and forth. They're all pretty well, real close to equal, okay, in, in that line. What Gary is looking at the most, I think there, he hadn't had a chance maybe to explain to you, the other brands are good brands, they're all good brands, they all want to do the job. The TNT is giving the city of Laphala a 100% lifetime guarantee on these tools. The others are not giving that.
That's the one made by High Tech, Gary?
Yes, one made by TNT.
TNT. Which one is that, it says?
That's the one that's actually one bid.
The problem, they win fire equipment.
That's Win Fire Equipment?
Yeah. And that's, that's a big issue. It really is a big issue. Now, the Genesis, we all, most of the guys do like the Genesis, because they have a different trigger mechanism. But they weren't giving us this warranty. So it makes a difference when you start talking about the warranty.
So what's still is, see, is the warranty on this Win's fire equipment, right?
Yes.
It's what we're buying.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really something to look strong in.
Also, it meets the specs, we wrote the specs, it meets it. I was trying to be fair about it, I don't have anything against any of these. I just get to come in here and just pick what people want me to pick. I'm sure you got a chief, if the firemen wants to buy it, we'll throw it out and let them buy it.
Is the High Tech, the Genesis?
Uh, yes. High Tech, yes, you know, give a good yes.
And that's what we sort of trained on, that's what I looked at that time.
They come out here, that's what you look at.
And it has a lifetime warranty?
Uh, that...
It does not?
No, well, warranties, you have to pay for them, you, you know, you have to get maintenance and stuff on them, just like everything else.
Genesis is a semi-warranty. Totally heard Bob explain some of the DT tools, between that deed, it's comparable to the Gents of Tools, but with a better warranty.
See, what we got here is companies now, we don't have TNT. Which one is TNT, Win?
The bottom, Win.
Okay. So you're saying that is the best one, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's it.
Is that what, what we're saying, Win is what we got there?
And we worked on these for a long time.
Yeah, the cutter, the sprayer, and the ram are all within, equal within 5% to 10% of each other on, on the force.
I was looking at this stuff, the internet and stuff, and I saw this force, and I didn't understand. And I knew, all I knew, I didn't know, is Win, I just knew it's Genesis, you know.
What we got to have nowadays and in the future is what you call boron cable cutter. It's because it's high spring steel in these vehicles.
Yes.
The older model cutter won't cut it. It takes a pretty high spring cutter, like in a 144,000, all that pretty rings, cut that boron steel.
So we're all in agreement that lowest one, lowest price one is Win Fire Equipment?
They met, they met the specification.
And is that, is what we're in agreement with?
That's what I recommend.
I make a motion, we approve of Win Fire Equipment.
I have a motion, Bob, you have a second?
Second, second, but you have a call, roll, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainan.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Under ordinance, jurisdiction orders, 24 tay dice, they were one, I mean, Mr. Design, he was first and second reading. You have a copy of your packet. Is there any comment?
Mayor, there, the clinic is here, if you, if they want to speak, I think.
Sure. Doctor, would you actually say something? Would you actually say?
I'm not sure what's been said, quite honestly.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Dr. Taylor. Catch me up where we are.
We just got to you on our agenda.
We're beginning.
Yes.
You're going to have to guide me through how these councils work, because tell me what you need, what we do.
We don't know either.
You don't know either?
Take, take shot, Ed, you did that wrong.
Okay, I got business I was bringing to town. I don't know where my landlord is. Anyway, I have a landlord who I talked to and to establish a business. I subsequently went to the, help me, the...
Planet Commission?
The Planning Commission, where I recognize Mr. Fainan and... And there's zoning question on what I'm doing. And does it, I'm just asking tonight, does it make a difference with me, that me and my landlord, I think he said on that committee, has he not, that we were at?
A few years back, is it?
A few years back, so that was made aware. And does it matter if he knew there were zoning problems? Does it make any difference on what this council decides tonight? Is it relevant?
Stan, did I comment on that?
What I think he's trying to ask is, last Thursday in the, in the planning commission, the planning commission voted to deny this express medical group, which is also a suboxin clinic. They denied their, their issues there, wanting to put that clinic in, in a C2 zoning area, which C2 zoning area is not permitted for medical offices. It has to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. What he is asking, would the council reverse or change the ordinance allowing this type of clinic into a C2 zoning area, which we have set aside an area for this type clinic that the doctor is asking for, which is in an M1 zoning area.
Stan, you also brought Mr. Cox's attention, Mr. first brought it up, if you went back.
It's been almost two months now.
Two months?
Yes. Could you, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last part.
Mr. Fast brought it to Mr. Cox's attention, Mr. first brought it up about your office.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cox knew about it, two months.
Prior to when, Mr. the gentleman, I'm sorry, in the yellow shirt.
That is correct.
Prior to me, you, you calling Lori?
Correct.
That day?
Correct.
Two months?
Yes.
Because you had concern?
I had, yes, I had went and met with Mr. Cox personally, yes.
You went to his al...
I sure did. I spoke with him and his wife, but...
About?
About your...
The facility?
Your facility, that is correct.
And you, did, can you tell, catch me up there? What did you talk to him about?
I talked to him about the zoning regulations of your business, wanting to locate there, what you would have to do. Mr. Cox was well aware of that, because he's, he sat on the planning commission before. He understood the zoning of that area. He was also explained that you need to contact me, no one from your office, other than Ms. Lori here. I spoke with her, because I contacted her.
And that was like eight weeks?
Correct.
Later, okay. And concerns?
Concerns of...
Zoning?
Concerns was the zoning of that area, which was...
And did you indeed come to some agreement that, that zoning was not kosher, not correct, or you as the zoning person needed to bring it to the committee, or where we are today?
Me, as codes enforcement, explained to him the zoning regulations for that area in that you would have to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals to have your business located there.
I got you. Okay, I understand. And you and I, so we hadn't talked till...
Until Thursday night.
Days ago?
Correct.
Okay. So really, what I needed to know, okay, thank you, thank you. And so, where we are, that, that's where we are. Is, you know, I can give you a little bit about, I don't know if you're interested, honestly, if you're interested in what I do, and what I was bringing to the community. It was, it was of significance. I was actually running late today, because I was taking care of Laphala people.
I got a bit of the green.
It's, I get a group of folks, and I take care of them, the whole group, and I take care of all their family medicine, period, and they pay me a flat fee, and I take care of them. There's a subdivision of them that are addicted to drugs. I subsequently take care of them. That may, there be a zoning issue, I was put in a, a niche that I belonged not, but I was put in a niche. And so I take care of Laphala people already. There's, it's, and that's them, for us up here.
They have moved to another location in Laphala.
Well, I don't know if I want, I don't know, you know? I tried, every day I'm not open.
So it's...
We all agree this place is needed, so we'll, we'll see.
Dr. Taylor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Out of, let's say, a pool of 100 patients that you serve, what percentage of those folks are drug addicted?
I, I would, I don't share with my patients information at all. It's HIPAA, it's one of those things that's mystical to me, but I ain't, I don't, I don't...
So a percentage that you serve is a, is a HIPAA violation, you told us?
I have no clue, but I'm not gambling on it over this. I, no way. I...
Don't just have a better picture of the folks you saw?
I, um...
Besides, besides the suboxin ads, I've seen only in the paper, and what I've seen from Planning Commission?
Come, you know, come, come see me, you know?
Where do you have other locations?
That's what you have to...
Where do you have other locations?
I'm over in Harron.
Okay.
That's, you know, a lot of folks see me here, so. I just, when it really came down to Mr. Cox, and I wanted to know, he and I should have talked, and would it made any difference really at this point, or was there a move point? So at this point, we are where we are, and I don't know what you guys go from here.
Is there any further counsel? You have a second?
He understood, Mr. Fainan understood, for him, he's... He, he understood, Mr. Fannin understood, to, for him to be there, we'd have to ask for a variance, the variance is, not change the code, but we'd have to ask for a variance, and, uh, if anybody wants to make a motion on that, to, to put a variance on this particular location, they can, but in conflict, I can't make a motion.
Are you judge comment? Want to talk to you in advance?
Yeah, I mean, uh, just to, I've answered, Mike and Joe on the, the board, at the meeting Thursday, I don't think Stephanie was, it's basically just a, interpretation, I guess, of, of your prior zoning ordinance, you have a zoning ordinance that, that basically puts pain clinics, and what is in the ordinance is a methadone clinic into M1. Question is, this particular clinic is not a quote-unquote methadone clinic, it's suboxin. And, and, and when we wrote the, the ordinance years ago, suboxin clinics weren't prevalent at that time. And the question was, and we tendered this in pass, by the way, was, you know, did that cover both the suboxin clinic and, you know, as part of your ordinance? And it was in pass's opinion that we, you could enforce that, you could require them to go there. And, and keep in mind that zoning, interpretation of a zoning ordinance and interpretation of a regulation ordinance are two totally different things. If we were here talking about regulating them, uh, we would not be able to regulate them under a, the definition of methadone, we couldn't do it. But, the, the issue of zoning is different, okay, it's just what type of businesses can go into that zoning, or into that zone, and, uh, it was in pass's opinion, it might as well that we could enforce that. And, and the purpose of the, the ordinance that you're voting on tonight is to clarify that, so we don't have to keep on admitting, when there's a new, a new type of pain or addiction facility five years from now, so.
Whatever its term, recall.
Exactly, exactly.
You have some reads, or any comment?
Mayor, the issue on the table right at this moment is not whether or not they're going to be given a variance, the issue on the table now is the amendment to this zoning ordinance, uh, twenty-fourteen dash zero one, which I think we need, and I'll make a motion that we approve those amendments.
You have a motion, Joe, have a second.
I'm going to go ahead and say it.
Have a motion, Joe, second, Bob, call roll, please.
I have a motion to approve what, Mayor Joe?
This, uh, these amendments to the zoning ordinance, that's the issue that's on the table right now.
Have a motion, Joe, second, Bob, call roll, please.
Mr. Bollinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries.
That's more than just wrote down? Yes.
Be adorable, business force council, this means the general meeting.
We have to do a second reading.
Oh, sure.